Okay, it's go time. So I want to welcome everyone to our board meeting tonight. As I said at workshop, I hope you're all having a great summer. And we're going to get started tonight with our public comment period. And I'm going to read the public comment rules. So at the start of every one of our business meetings, we encourage and welcome members of our community to give a public comment. We really do like to hear from you. And this is reserved for those who reside within Davis County or work in Davis School District. The sign up with your contact information has been available out in the hallway prior to the meeting. And I've got it right here and you'll be called up one by one to speak. This is not an opportunity to air complaints or comments about individual student education issues, bidding, contracts, or issues related to employment for which other avenues of communication exist. Derogatory comments about district employees or board members will not be allowed. We will treat everyone with dignity, respect, and kindness. And we ask that you do the same for us. So each speaker will be given two minutes to give their comment. And that will be timed. And you will be given notice when your time is up. Please note that we are listening and taking notes. And there will be follow up. Okay, for our first public comment, we have Sarah, is it Beecher? Or Deacher? Beecher. Okay, Sarah.
President Gerard, Superintendent Linford, and members of the board. My name is Sarah Beecher and I teach math at Farmington High School. Where I also serve as one of the athletic directors, head girl soccer coach, and an SBO advisor. While I wear many hats, teaching math is the reason I came to Farmington. So that I can continue to create and explore the pedagogy of math in the classroom. I've taught a range of math courses. From Math for Life and Secondary Math II to CE Math 1010 and CE Math 1050. While student teaching at Davis High, Jan Hall has taught me a powerful truth. Every student can do math. That belief has shaped my approach ever since. At Farmington, I developed a math pathway for students who have struggled in the past. Because every student has the capability to graduate high school having taken a college level math course. As sophomores, they take Secondary Math II Essentials, followed by 1030 Prep Junior Year. By Senior Year, they're ready for a college level math course, CE Math 1030. A key part of the program's success is continuity. These students have the same teacher in both their sophomore and junior years. That consistency builds trust, motivation, and belief. My goal is by the end of the first semester of their sophomore year, they know I see their potential and students have confidence in their math abilities once again. Having the same teacher at the beginning of their junior year, we are able to start the year with confidence. And the students know I expect their best on day one. Most of these students who follow this pathway receive CE Math 1030 credit before they graduate high school. I love working with students across all math levels and helping them see what they're capable of. I invite you to visit my classroom and see students actively engage in meaningful, critical thinking. Thank you for your time and continued support.
Thank you so much for your comment, Ms. Beecher. We appreciate that. Okay, I recognize this next name, Michael Rice.
Hello, President Gerard and Board. My name is Michael Rice. I am a longtime resident of Davis County. I've had six kids go through the Davis school system. My youngest is going to be a junior this year at Vumont. I've spent my life in technology. At age 13, I started programming. In the 1980s, I've been in technology all of my life. I feel at this point in my life, I'd like to give back to the community. I've started a free resource for teachers to train them how to use AI. And I just wanted to introduce myself. And I'd love to talk with anybody who has interest in policies and helping with training. At the district level, I know a lot of the schools are looking for the board for approval to be able to use AI in different ways. I have a sister who's a teacher in Virginia. And I know a lot of teachers and I'm talking with them. And I'd love to be able to work with the teachers in Davis School District. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rice. We appreciate your offer and somebody will be connecting with you. Thank you. Okay, we had one more that wanted to do a public comment that didn't have a chance to sign our board. Is there anyone else out there who wanted to give a public comment? I was told that there was. Oh, oh, I know this guy. Yep.
President, Superintendent, and Board members. My name is Steve Furstud. I live in Leighton. And I brought gifts for the school board. One of them is an exegesis on the construct of the Constitution supported by the Federal's Papers. And the reason for that is, on September 17th, you're supposed to teach about the Constitution in the schools. And this would be a great opportunity to have something like this go through. The gist of this paper is when the delegates were debating the Constitution, of course, the Articles Confederation are totally inadequate. But some of the delegates were Madison and Hamilton, John Jay, and a profound French political philosopher named Montesquieu. And Montesquieu said that to have, they had studied, they had studied democracies, they had studied republics, and monarchies and everything. He said, you have to have separation of powers. Legislative, judicial, and executive. And a republican form of government where the people elect representatives to pass laws. And, but he warned, these 13 states, there are five of them, they're already too big for this model of government. And Madison said, "Monty, you're right. But the Constitution solves that. Because we form a national government that's supreme over the sovereign states and with enumerated powers."
Thank you so much. Your time is up. But we appreciate you coming, Mr. Furstud.
Great.
And you said that you had something for us.
Yeah, I've got some of these for everybody.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. We want to thank everyone for their great public comments tonight. Yeah, yeah, we can. You can bring them up here and we can, you can give them to Ms. Moore right there and she can make sure that we get those, if you have those, Mr. Furstud. We just want to thank you for your public comments. And if you didn't get in here in time, or something has come to you, we always have a box out there for public comments. And you can put that in there, in the written comment box. And we get those too. So, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, we have some amazing board recognitions tonight. So before we start with our first one, I wanted to give a little bit of a special welcome to our new area directors. And they're not new faces to us, but they're new in their area director job. So we just wanted to recognize them. And we have Chris Keim and Deanne Kapitanov and Jason Smith. So it's great to have them as new area directors. And I think your favorite part of your job is going to be coming to board meetings. No doubt. So, welcome. Okay, so first of all, we do have Ms. Deanne Kapitanov, new secondary director. And she's going to talk about Farmington High School.
Good evening, President Gerard and esteemed Board, Superintendent Linford, and Mr. Luffel. I am so pleased to introduce you to Principal Whitaker here. He is from the great school of Farmington High. And he's got some great news to share and an introduction to make. So I'll turn the time over to him.
Thank you. Thank you so much to our wonderful school board and to our superintendent for having us out here this evening. This is the Farmington High School Girls Lacrosse Team. And they are amazing. They had a fantastic season. We have Coach Chris McCauley. He was unable to come here today, but we have Coach Jocelyn Jensen here with us today. And I'll let her speak in just a moment. But these girls, if you've ever seen girls lacrosse, it is intense. They work so hard. And they, what's amazing is they have the most amazing attitudes. They're phenomenal students. And they are, they are the toughest. One of the toughest, if not the toughest, competitors at Farmington High School. If any of you were able to watch the state championship game, it was incredible. It was out at Zion's Bank Stadium, way out in Harriman. The team that they played in the state championship, that's literally their backyard. And it's a testament to how awesome our community in Farmington and in Kaseville, our shared communities are. Because we brought more fans to that stadium than they did. We filled it, we packed it. It was intense. Our students showed up. We were screaming the entire time. It was, the game was back and forth. And it was, it came down honestly to the last minute where we pulled ahead and won. And it was just fantastic. It's, you know, it's very difficult to win a state championship in any sport. And when you do, and when we see our schools from Davis School District do it, it's a big deal. This is a big deal. We have amazing girls, amazing parents. Our parent support was fantastic. Just an awesome, positive, really good season. And we're so, we're so fortunate to have these amazing student athletes at our school. And we're grateful for the opportunity that we get to recognize them tonight. So thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm going to have Coach Jensen come on up and say a few things.
Thank you, Principal Whitaker.
To add to what Principal Whitaker said, I'd just say, these girls really are the most hardworking girls. Worked all, all of winter, extra trainings. Inside and out of the weight room, on the field, on the wall. They're always playing lacrosse. And they're always together as a family. One thing that L. Erickson, our goalie, had been said and said all season was, the only way we can do it is together. And that's exactly how we won state was together. And I'm so proud of these girls. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. This really is an incredible accomplishment. I have a special place in my heart for lacrosse because I have grandchildren that play lacrosse. And it's an exciting, and has been said, intense game. And it's, it's pretty tough and rough out there. So way to go. This is huge and we're just so proud of you. So you represented Davis School District very well. And we have a plaque for you that Ms. Powell is going to give you. And we'll take a photo. And can, can we have, do we have any parents in the audience? I'll bet we do. So if you want to raise your hand and acknowledge. Because I know it takes the efforts of parents to win a state championship. So congratulations, all of you.
And thank you for coming during the summer. That's awesome. That's a big effort.
Yeah, congratulations. Thanks for being with us.
That was really cool.
Yeah. Okay. We have the next award for, Mr. Doug Forsgren, one of our elementary directors, is going to talk about this, President's Award. And I'll let you explain it and explain the acronym.
Yeah, thank you. One of my, what I quickly learned about this position is my favorite part of the job, I'm sorry, it's not board meeting.
Oh, you're kidding. Oh, okay.
My favorite part of the job is just really been able to learn about the incredible leaders that we have in our buildings. It has, you know, as a school principal, you have your own students, you have your own teachers. And, and I was a little worried about that, stepping into this position, missing that. And I definitely missed that. But being able to work with such incredible leaders, learning from them, and to be able to share some of that knowledge and, and information amongst each other has just been incredible. Davis School District received, these incredible leaders that we worked with, received three of the UAESP, which is the Elementary Association of Element, sorry, the Utah Elementary Association, I think, oh, it's backwards on here. Sorry, it's UAESP, that's why. Utah Association of Elementary School Principals is what it stands for. And Davis School District administrators received three of them this year, which is incredible. I don't remember that happening. So I get the privilege of being able to tell you about them. Unfortunately, two of them aren't here. They're either retired or near retirement. And I think they felt like they're just going to enjoy their summer.
They're done.
Which I don't blame them. But the first was Cameron Forbush. Cameron received the first ever President's Award. So this was something where he's not, he's not nominated by his peers that goes to state, as are some of our other awards. This one is just picked by the president and, and the leadership of UAESP. But Cameron received the first ever President's Award. And what was written about him from the UAESP leadership was, "Cameron was there to make me feel welcome. Cameron has a love for what he did as a principal. His kindness and generosity are sincere. And he always made the individual feel special. He has been a friend and a mentor. We also, we have also served together as UAESO Summer Golf Committee, organizing and hosting the golf tournament for the last half dozen years or more. Cameron is a principal deserving of this award." So we, we appreciate Cameron Forbush for, for all his efforts representing our school district really well, of course. But, you know, he's put a lot of work into our school district as well as the association there. And so it's nice that he receives a recognition for that. The second award was Ms. Marjorie Conrad received the Principal Mentor of the Year. So obviously, this would be a principal that, that people can turn to. That people feel like they can trust. That, that is open for information and willing to serve. And some of what she, what was shared about her from the nomination form that went to the state to decide who received this was, one of them was from a new principal that often turned to her. And they said, "Marjorie is a communication genius of the world. When I was unsure of how to roll things out to my faculty in a concise, eloquent way, Marjorie is who I turn to. She is always willing to share and help any way she can." And I've seen that as, as her director this past year. I mean, she is, she's, she's one that we asked to be a mentor. Literally, a mentor for one of our new principals. Because she has an incredible skill set and she's willing to, willing to, to share it. I mean, her prowess in, in particular, in reading is, is, it's hard to be matched, honestly. We just have such incredible leaders and Marjorie, Marjorie's one of those. So she, she received the Mentor Principal of the Year. We're just, we're very proud of these principals.
Awesome. We want to congratulate, even though they're not here, Mr. Forbush and Ms. Conrad, both excellent principals. So let's, let's give them a round of applause, even though they're not here. Thank you. Okay. And so, did you want to present, Mr. Forsgren, did you want to present?
I think I'm the next one. Yeah, yep.
I don't want to steal his thunder, so.
Yeah, don't.
Yeah, he's the presenter. Okay.
All right.
I'm just making sure. Okay, Superintendent Linford is going to present this one.
And, and I toyed with the idea of going down there, but I don't want the camera on the back of my head. I just, I don't know what it is. So I want, I really am grateful for this opportunity to recognize a recognition, like the others that Mr. Forsgren was just speaking of. The UAESP has selected Tracy Robbins as the Elementary Supervisor of the Year. And we'll have her come up, but I want, I want to say a couple of things about Tracy. I've, I've known Tracy for just a long time. And I've known her, I make jokes that we were soccer moms together because a lot of years, we sat next to each other in, on camping chairs, you know, cheering on our young daughters in soccer. And they were good. They were really feisty and good. One of the things that I love about Tracy, and it connects to the soccer mom thing, is she is, she is literally the one that turned really lame parent parties into something really cool for the girls. She's just, she's just on fire all the time. And just, and I also, I wish there was a better word. She's just shamelessly fun. Like, we're going to do this thing. And she made it great. And she knew how to pull the shy girls in. So she's just excellent with young people. She's, she has incredible gifts there. And I talk about this thing that is the most, for me, it's the thing I look for the most in a leader and in a teacher. And it's a word that people hear and they go, oh, that's not that inspiring. But it's, it's my favorite word to describe someone in education. And it's conscientious. Someone that does the right thing because it's the right thing. And I've seen Tracy, I think probably at her very worst. It's hard to tell because her very worst is better than almost everyone's best. But Tracy, at her, at her very worst, is incredibly conscientious. She cares about her work because she knows the end result is that it improves the lives of young people. That's where she's centered. And, you know, anyone that works with Tracy, and now half the room has worked with Tracy, and I see a lot of nods as we're talking. She's impeccable. And, and that idea of, I don't give a lot of people the label of conscientious, and maybe not that many people think it's that great of a label to seek it. But, but Tracy is truly a conscientious person. She cares about doing the right thing for the right reasons. And I can't think of anyone that does it better than Tracy. I learned a lot from her about how to do all the things. She is, she's great at getting, she goes to the school when there's a problem. She goes into the space and she mentors administrators. She solves impossible problems. And I wish I could talk specifics, but I could literally walk you through. She's solved impossible problems this past year. And I can't say enough about her leadership and how grateful I am to have her serving in the superintendent's office. And our whole district is fortunate and blessed by her efforts. So I, I wish we gave her the award instead, but we're going to give you a plaque to commemorate the other award. So, thank you, Tracy. Can you come up and just say a couple of things?
Just off the cuff.
Do you know, I think that it is, goes back to what, I'm going to get emotional and I never get emotional. Superintendent Linford said, 20, I think I hit my 28th year two days ago. And I started for kids. And I'm here for kids. And I, my focus, my lens has shifted. Not maybe directly with kids as a classroom teacher, but then as a principal helping teachers. And now it's with my principals who have the hardest job to do. And they're doing incredible things in spaces. That very, the landscape and the focus and the look looks so different than what it did when I was a principal. And it is an honor. I work with the most incredibly talented, all-in, for every one team on this third floor in this district. And it is a privilege. I do like to have fun and I do like to be silly. And some, I just laughed at the most ridiculous joke. And I'm the only one that laughed at it. And they were all laughing at me because I was laughing at it. But that's, that's who I am. And I, and I'm so grateful to receive this award. And for my principals for recognizing that. It means, it means more to me than anything that I've ever done. So, thank you.
Congratulations. We have the plaque for you, so you have to stay up here. And I will have the privilege of giving that to you. We are so happy to have you here in Davis School District and so amazed at the work that you do. Okay, these awards, they're always fun. And we have another great one coming up. And that's Custodian of the Year. And we'll let Mr. Tim Luffel talk about this one.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I'm actually going to have Weston come up to the front. He's, he actually works with the custodial group.
Okay, Weston.
We want to recognize Mr. Ian Calkins as the Custodian of the Year. Although he is a great custodian, he's not a fan of the lamplight. And so I'll turn a little time over to Weston to talk about how this award comes to be.
Yes, we reached out to all of our principals in the district to kind of look for nominations for Custodial of the Year and Custodian of the Year. We call them facilities, facility managers. We have over 600 in the district. And so this is quite the little competition. It's one of my privileges to get to know these guys and work with them a little bit. But Ian Calkins at Creekside Elementary was nominated by his principal and he was chosen for Custodian of the Year. I talked to him today. He's terrified to even come to this thing. And so I told him I'd give it and he can, I'd get it for him and he can hang on his wall. But he was excited. Kind of one of those quiet, he does awesome work, you know, awesome work. Just a lamplight guy.
What's funny is Creekside's one of my schools and I actually know him. So, you know, you should have said, it's just Bridget. You don't have to be afraid. So, anyway. But we really appreciate our custodians. They do so much to keep our buildings looking amazing. And so many times, they're friends to the students. And, and the students look to them for, you know, friendship and to talk to them about their day. And so custodians are really, really important. And we want to give him a hand and also tell you, Mr. Weeks, we appreciate your work. So we'll give this plaque to you and you can give it to Ian.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. Tim with the NPI, National Procurement Institute Achievement.
I'll come down here because the purchasing department's not as shy.
Nope.
So if you guys will come up here with me, please. This is most of our purchasing department. There's a couple that couldn't come tonight. But we wanted to recognize them. And I'll have Lori talk a little bit more about this award. But this award is a nationally recognized procurement award that only a couple districts in Utah have ever received. And our purchasing department has got it 10 years in a row.
Wow.
This is not required by the district. This is not an expectation of any of them. They do this because of their professionalism and their pride in what they do. And that's what makes it so cool. Is that this is something they've just chosen to do as a group. This isn't a report that Lori fills out on her desk, it's her whole team. The whole team has to work together on this or it doesn't happen. So I'm super excited to work with them. I'll have Lori talk a little bit about the award and then we'll do a little presentation.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening, members of the board, superintendent and my colleagues. I am so happy to be here tonight to share this experience with you. I am pleased to share that the district has been honored with the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award for ten consecutive years. This prestigious award is presented by the National Procurement Institute to organizations that demonstrate excellence in procurement practices by obtaining high scores in areas such as innovation, professionalism, productivity, leadership and e-procurement. The Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award recognizes public agencies that have demonstrated a commitment to strategic and efficient procurement operations. Fewer than two hundred school districts, counties, cities, universities across the United States and Canada has received this honor each year. It is a rigorous application process that evaluates our policies, procedures, staff certifications, training, use of technologies and efforts to maximize taxpayer dollars while ensuring compliance, transparency and ethical standards. This reward reflects the dedication of our procurement team to continuous improvement and operation excellence. Their work ensures that the district obtains high-quality goods and services at the best value to support student learning and district priorities. On behalf of our procurement department, I thank the board for your continued support of your efforts to uphold the highest standards in public purchasing. Thank you.
Wow. We, we want to congratulate you. This is a big deal, ten years in a row. That is, that's just amazing. So, wow, we just appreciate this work so much. And you deserve to be recognized, so I want to thank Lori and all of her team. We appreciate what you do and it's nice to recognize you for what you do every day. So, thank you. Congrats.
Thank you.
Happy ten years, that's amazing.
That's, that's a big deal. Thank you for being with us tonight. Okay, information items. We have our board reports. Let's see, which side, should we start with Ms. Barber down?
Maybe start at the middle. Have you ever done that?
Well, if you had as many papers in front of you.
That's true, that's true. I don't want to throw you off.
And you can't find your board report, so we'll, we'll go with, we'll go with Ms. Barber.
It's good, it feels like we, in the summer, things just feel like you.
Next time, Ms. Stevens.
It's okay. Okay, so I'm going to just highlight a few things that I've been up to that have been really fun. First, I was able to attend the North Layton Junior High Life Skills Event and that was so fun. That was really awesome, one of my favorite events. They, I actually couldn't believe how many students came back and the teachers, that they came back to be the coaches for kids, so they get to come and learn all the different sports and life skills. I once again was a dance judge, which proves that they, they will take anybody. Dance is not my area of expertise, but I was able to point out just how excited the kids were. And so that was really fun. My other thing I'm really looking forward to is my term on the UHSAA, Utah High School Athletics and Activities Association officially starts this month. And so that's been exciting, getting onboarded onto that and representing Davis School District. I was able to meet with Representative Katie Hall at the Capitol to talk about some things, some issues that we have coming up. At their scene and Jason Smith was there, who's been great. He's been on the Board of Trustees and now will help us as a director here at the district with our athletics. And it was really good to represent Davis School District in that forum, so I'm really thankful to do that. And yeah, I've been learning a lot about AI as well. I really liked that public comment because that's kind of the area that I'm focused on a lot right now as well. And then I was going to say, I feel really connected to the things that are going on in the school district. And I realize the main ways I am are not board-specific. It's because we're doing a really good job with our communications. And I was telling people, I really like, there's Instagram accounts for our maintenance and custodians and construction projects that are going on. There's lots of updates online about all the things that teachers are doing during this, or sorry, administrations doing the summer, over the summer. And those are things that are available to anybody. So if you just want to see all the great stuff the school district is doing, that's such a good way to be informed and thank you to our communications departments. It's really fun to see there. And then I also, I've been driving a lot this summer, lots of road trips. And I've been listening to the podcast that we have, the Davis School District, Bite Size PL for professional learning for teachers. And I'm not a teacher, but I learn a lot from that. So I wanted to give a shout out to that resource. And if anybody's interested to just hear how focused our teachers are on continuing, continually approving, improving, I would look up that podcast yourself. So, anyway, thanks for all the great work in the district.
Thank you, Ms. Barber. Ms. Mercer?
I should have prepped for that. I, I, mine had, my month has been a little bit light because I've been on several vacations this month, so, which has been lovely. But I'm, it's grateful to be able to still connect with the district. I was able to attend the Woods Cross City Council Meeting and just connect with their city council and thank them for providing SROs and working with our district for SROs and talked with their Chief of Police and that was a lovely conversation. I also had a great conversation, I'm brainstorming with our IT department, about ways that we can help connect our families to help support their students through using the tools that we already have that are phenomenal tools. So working with the IT department to create, well, brainstorming and hopefully then our IT department and our marketing department are going to create tools to help parents know how to effectively use MyDSD and Canvas to support their students, which are such phenomenal tools. Our availability for MyDSD, for us to be able to look and see what our children, how they, if they've accomplished their, their assignments, if they've finished them up. And I am really looking forward to empowering our parents to supporting their students and helping their students accomplish their grades. So our teachers are, are providing phenomenal instruction. Sometimes, and our job at home as parents is to make sure that we're following up with that instruction by making sure that those assignments are getting turned in. So I'm looking forward to working with the IT department on getting that together to make sure we just empower our parents even more. I have also had many, many, many conversations about cellphone use in schools with principals, administrators, students, teachers. Even to the extent of yesterday, I was getting, I was at my dentist appointment and the dentist and several hygienists all came in the room and all wanted to share their opinions of, of cellphone use in school. I didn't talk back too much during that time, but I was grateful that, that people are excited and wanting to, to hear about that. And then also I've participated in our South Davis Community That Care Coalition Meetings, met with our key leaders today, actually, and then also with work groups. And as a South Davis Communities That Care Coalition, we're putting together a float for the Handcart Days, again, to encourage parent connection, to help avoid dangerous decisions for our students and help keep them on track by helping them connect with their parents.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Mercer. Okay, Ms. Hogan.
Okay, amazing. I do not have a dentist story to share. But I just, a couple of things I just wanted to mention. I was able to go to the R, to one of the days of the R and R Conference that we have every year for our teachers, which was amazing, that we have that two-day event for our teachers. And also where the district leaders will dance for everybody. So there is a video, in case you didn't get to see that. And I, I was able to speak with one of the teachers in my area in the hallway for quite a while. So that was really great, just to connect to the teachers. I was also able to attend the annual dignity and leadership symposium that we put on as a district for a lot of the leadership from other districts in our state. Dr. Montero puts that whole thing together and it was wonderful to be there and to hear the work that we're doing and to hear the discussions that they had there. I also had the opportunity to tour three of our elementary schools. Dogsey, Layton Elementary and Island View to see their camp summer programs and just get some information about how they run those and the purposes and how popular they are. Island View has so many more kids that want to do it than they have room for, so they're trying to figure out how to expand the program. So it's fun to see the kids doing things and also maybe helping, help with that loss of learning that happens over the summer. And then lastly, I also went to the North Layton Junior High Life Sports and I was also happened to be there during the dance competition, but they did not even ask me to be a judge. So that shows you where I am with dancing. But it was really fun to see them all dancing and the teachers were more into it than even the kids. So it was great to see that event happen at that school.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Hogan, Ms. Price.
Okay. I, I was able to attend the Davis Education Foundation Gala and hopefully all of you are able to be there. I know we had different showings of movies, but that was an excellent event. And I'll report on how much we raised, we were able to raise on that, probably in September. But I also attended a day of the R and R Conference and I think that that's such a valuable experience for our teachers. And it was just great to be there and I think it's so cool that our teachers get to learn from each other. And I really enjoyed the breakout sessions that I went to and learned a lot from, from our own teachers. I also attended the Dignity and Leadership Symposium and just want to thank Dr. Montero and OEO. It was phenomenal. I was really blown away by our student panel and just their insight and just the things that they had to share. And I think that there's so much that we can learn from our students and just their perspectives. And I just really appreciate just all that we were able to learn and understand at that symposium. So thank you for that. We've been working on a business administrator evaluation and we're going to be able to finish that up with, for Tim, or Mr. Luffel. And I was also able to visit the three elementary schools with their summer programs. And I just want to say thanks to, to Sue and your team at Federal Programs and the work that you guys put into that to make that happen for, for our students. And I know that we had other schools that, that were doing summer programs as well. Those were just the three schools that we were able to stop in and see. And I just think it's so valuable for, for those students. And just to see the buy-in from the, the teachers that help support and run those programs. And Bridgette and I, we were able to go to Show Up for Teachers Gala. Do we have the name of the?
Yes. Mary Lee Hollinger from Hobart Elementary.
She was, she won an award. I can't remember what it was called, but it was, it was exciting to have one of our teachers nominated and for her to win. For her innovation, really. Yeah. And then, let's see. Yeah, that's about it. I mean, there's been other things, but I'll end there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Price. And before I give my board report, I neglected to give a special shout out, special welcome to Chadley Bodily. And she's a familiar face too, but, and she's going, no, but no, it's, it's a big deal. So she's been an area director and now has moved into the superintendency. So we're super excited about that and then we'll get to work more closely with Ms. Bodily. So I wanted to mention that too. Okay. Board report. I, I just have to mention the life sports competition also because it's just one of my favorite things to participate in and watch. And I'll have you know, they, they didn't even think about asking me to be a judge. But I just love going to watch, I mean, they can choose from things like basketball, football, track, volleyball. And the fun thing about it is seeing the teams and the names that they come up with for themselves. And just to see the interaction between the students and their coaches there that are their teachers is incredible. And it's just a win-win for everyone. These students, sometimes even, they're seventh graders and they haven't even started junior high and they've gotten to make new friends and gotten to know teachers that will be their teachers when the school year starts. And it's just such a great program. And I was able to talk to a lot of parents there that are just really excited about it and happy that their kids could participate in that. And I want to just thank Principal Eason and his team at North Layton Junior High. And I know that the foundation helped with some support along with McDonald's. So it's just a great program. Also enjoyed the gala so much and the work of our foundation. The dignity and leadership symposium was wonderful and close to my heart. So thank you, Dr. Montero, Superintendent Linford, all that participated in that. It was great. And I was able to attend a Layton Communities That Care Key Leader Meeting. And we talked about our action plan and things that we want to accomplish. Just one of several recent events offered by the Layton Community That Cares Group was a workshop for parents at King Elementary, Lincoln Elementary and Bayview Elementary. And that involved about eighty-five people. And this group does a lot of good things and I just wanted to give them a shout out. Lastly, I wanted to mention Utah School Board Association, letting you know that the registration and the draft program is supposed to be coming out tomorrow, probably Thursday at the very latest, for the Leadership Academy, which will be held the end of September down at Ruby's Inn in Bryce Canyon. So be watching for that. That's going to be a great event. Okay. All right, Ms. Powell.
Okay. Like Ms. Mercer, I've had a few vacations, which has been nice. But there's some things I was kind of sad I missed. But we, we've had an audit committee meeting and as you know, we're in the process of doing an audit on Davis Connect. And it's been interesting because I've had one of my kids do, take a summer online class from Canyon's Virtual Academy. And I have another of my kids taking a summer online class from Davis Connect. And so it's interesting to compare because I'm actually having to get in and help one of my kids a lot with one of those online classes. So, anyway, I was talking with Mr. Hanson, maybe an hour ago, about the differences. And it's, it's been a really good experience to actually be in both, both of those processes. We've had policy committee, the big thing that we're doing right now is cellphone policy and we will continue discussion in this meeting. I have also had a local community council, or city council member connect me with Communities That Care. They have had a concern about some of our school district policies making it a little bit difficult for them to address drug use with kids. So I'm going to be following up with that. I was also happy to go to the dignity symposium, appreciate all the work put into that. And I have to agree, who made that comment about the student panel? I was pretty impressed with those comments. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Powell. Ms. Stevens.
Yeah, I've been having a lot of FOMO this summer too. I've been missing some fun things because of other commitments, like the R and R, I was just sad I missed that. And the dancing especially and the gala, but I did win a basket, so I was happy about that. But I've been busy with other things and we have had some good discussion with our audit committee. I've been meeting with some parents that have concerns, wanted to meet privately and have been really appreciative of being able to communicate those things with our district and having them be open to feedback while respecting the anonymity.
Anonymity.
Thank you, thank you. Still not saying it right. You know what I mean, of those individuals. But they shouldn't have anything to be worried about because I think our, our district is very open to feedback and actively seeking it out, seeking to always improve and know how they can have constructive criticism help them in their efforts, which I appreciate that. And then I also got to do a fun thing where I was invited to help with a podcast at Beaumont for, on high reliability schools. It's their VHS Viking Voices that Mrs. Hernandez, one of the teachers there, does. And just have a great discussion about what a great program, high reliability schools is and how it- and how it really will make a difference as teachers and schools work to implement that. So I hope that's something that we can, I like seeing them encouraging each other to do that and helping provide ways of making it work in their school. So that was really a fun experience and that's about it.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Thank you all for your amazing work on the board and in Davis School District. We appreciate each one of you. Okay, we're going to move to our consent agenda and, oh, Superintendent, I almost forgot you again.
That's fine. I would have rolled with it. That would have been fine. Consent agenda is fine. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things and capture a couple of things, mainly while they're on my mind. One, we've heard from, we've heard from each of us about some of the great events that we participate in. We're talking about R and R, we're talking about the Dignity Symposium. And it's interesting because, you know, with our Dignity Symposium, we've had folks tell us it's the most incredible training they've ever experienced. People that are from other districts. For us, it feels a lot like, you know, just kind of what we do. We do great trainings, we take it very seriously, we pour ourselves into it. R and R, same thing. I'm talking to Tina Buggren, who's a national highly sought-after speaker. And we're leaning against the wall, just kind of talking. She said, no, I go everywhere in the country. This is really special. And I wish I could say I had anything to do with it other than just watching it and being inspired. Our community nights, all the things we do, I appreciate just really amazing individuals and teams that put these things together and pour their hearts into it. So we're all beneficiaries of that. So I just want to just remind us that it is special, the things that the folks in our district are doing. I was today, or this week, was at my superintendent's conference. I took the chair or the president of the Superintendent's Association. And I was saying to some that, man, it's way less fun when you're running the meetings. I don't just get to kind of enjoy the conference when you're running it. But the thing I wanted to point out is I, the last six times, at each one of these meetings, each day, we have one superintendent do a superintendent spotlight, you know. And they tell us kind of their life story, you know. Literally, it seems like there's more and more, they're starting from birth and they, pictures of their parents and what brought them to this place. And it's kind of a get-to-know-you. And then they share some philosophy and some best practice and things they've learned. But the last six I've seen, all of them brings up that Davis D is one of their stops and talks about something they learned from us. And I'm just surprised, folks that I had no idea at all had any connection to us, talk about Davis School District and how it mattered in their career. And one superintendent today noted in his path that he worked at our, one of our schools for at-risk youth. And it was the same school that Luke Rasmussen, who's, he stood up and said, I worked at that school. And he's a superintendent. And then I said, our teaching and learning director, I think, got his start at that school and said, and I said, and that guy could take any one of your jobs. Just kind of kidding. But one of my counterparts that works with several districts said, you know, I helped do accreditation in your district. And he wasn't wrong. Almost everyone I met, I thought, they could be a superintendent leading a district. So I'm really basking in this idea that we're just so fortunate to have such great leadership and people that are really all in and they're conscientious and do great work. So the people in this room and others outside of this room, our students and our children benefit from your work, so thank you. Make us proud.
Thank you, Superintendent Linford. I'm glad that you mentioned the behind-the-scenes work because we go to these things like the R and R Conference, which was fantastic. And we just go and enjoy it and there's a lot of people in this room that put so much work into these events and they're always fantastic. And I also just wanted to share just some thoughts on Superintendent Linford being the president of the Superintendent's Association. This is not a light job. And I have learned a lot about that organization, having worked in Utah School Boards Association and with the superintendents. And Superintendent Linford is very well-respected in our state among the other superintendents. So this is just a big shout-out to him and the great work that he does because other superintendents look to him for counsel into our district. And it's exciting to have him as president of that organization and he's doing a great job. So yeah, well, Dr. Montero's clapping back there, so let's just give him a little clap.
Thank you.
It's a big deal, so good job. Okay, now we're going to go to our consent items, one through nine. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anyone would like moved? Seeing none, I'll expect a motion.
I move, we approve consent items one through nine.
Okay, we've had a motion to approve the consent items. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Price to approve consent items one through nine and a second by Ms. Hogan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, consent items passed. We will move now to our business items and I will present the first one on there. And that is a change in our calendar and you should have received that. There are a couple of changes that we needed to make. On August 5th, we are going to have somewhat like today, the board workshop and the board meeting, both on August 5th. And the reason that we're doing that is because we are holding a truth in taxation hearing on August 19th. And we're not sure how long that will go or how many will get here for that. But we will be listening to everyone that comes. And so we needed to combine that workshop and board meeting. And then after the truth in taxation hearing, we'll move right into a board meeting to vote on the passage of the 2025-26 budget after listening to the public comments. And then in light of what was presented on boundaries and programs, we have the need to have a public hearing and elementary two, number two, boundary hearing on October 21st. And then, along with our meeting, and then we'll add a public hearing on South Davis Junior High on the 23rd and a public hearing for Lincoln Elementary on the 28th. So those are the changes that we need to make. Do I hear a motion to approve these changes?
I move that we approve the changes in the board meeting, 2025 calendar, as noted in the calendar exhibit.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, so Ms. Barber made the motion and it was seconded by Ms. Price to approve the changes in our board calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. All right. And Mr. TJ Strain is going to come up and talk about the focused graduation pathway plan.
So.
Oh, that's okay. That's okay.
We spoke about the focused graduation pathway and so I'm just here tonight to answer any questions, to clarify anything. If we need to do a review on it, that's fine as well.
Are there any questions on the focused graduation pathway plan? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion. Ms. Mercer?
I move to approve the focused graduation pathway plan.
Okay, I'll second it. And we have a second. So we have a motion by Ms. Mercer and a second by Ms. Stevens to approve the focused graduation pathway plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And we have one no from Ms. Hogan.
Sorry, I was hoping to make a comment. I thought it was after the motion, but.
And yeah.
Is it too late to make a comment?
No, it's not. Please do.
Okay.
Please, you can explain your vote.
Just a couple of thoughts really quick. So this has been a really tough one for me and I've appreciated everybody, superintendency and others who have spent time discussing this graduation pathway with me and other alternative methods to graduation that help our struggling students. I just felt too uneasy about this particular pathway because I worry it will undermine our efforts to curb absenteeism and our efforts to encourage the traditional path to graduation. But it also points to a mirror philosophy or trend, I fight troubling, but others do not. And that is just the way that we're educating students is shifting with more non-traditional options available. So I fully acknowledge that my protest against this long path to graduation might be a moot point. But I just didn't feel like it aligned with our overarching goal of the world-class education.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Mr. Strain.
Initiating a study in accordance with Utah Code that requires a study before making any changes to special enrollment programs. And this is in connection with the French Dual Language Immersion Program at South Davis Junior High School, acknowledging that this could, this study could result in consolidation or closure of that program. Enrollment in the French Dual Language Program at South Davis has declined in recent years. Last year, there were fifteen students enrolled across the three grades, seven through nine. And for this coming year, there are only eight. There are some factors that contribute to that that are worth studying, including a neighboring school, Mueller Park, having that same dual-language immersion program, as well as the path that that feeds to. The Bridge Program in high school resides at Bountiful High and not at South Davis Feeder High School, Woods Cross. So I'm here to request the board initiate a study for that.
Okay, are there any questions? Mr. Kaim first. Ms. Powell.
So is the tentative thought is maybe consolidate that to Mueller Park?
That is one of the options that's worth studying because of low enrollment.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. If there, oh, Ms. Mercer, did you have a question?
No, I just was going to entertain a motion.
Okay, okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve a study of the French Dual Immersion Language Program at South Davis Junior High School.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Mercer made the motion and Ms. Price seconded that we initiate a study of the French Dual Language Immersion Program at South Davis Junior High. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, next, we're going to have Doug Forsgren come up and talk about the Spanish Dual Language Immersion Program at Lincoln.
Hi, President Gerard, Vice President Price and board members, who we've been asking for a lot of studies lately. And we want to continue to look at that as, in particular, we want to look at Lincoln Elementary right now with the Spanish Dual Immersion Program there. We, one thing we want to make clear is that, you know, the research on the dual-language immersion program is solid. The state publishes a good, solid research on the outcomes that come. These are a couple of the findings that show that DLI students, you know, demonstrated measurable advances in language and content area assessments and that the programs tend to offer students opportunities beyond because of, you know, the bilingual skills that they're picking up that go into the workplace. However, we're not seeing all those benefits reaped at Lincoln right now. And there's probably many factors that come into play. That's why we're asking to study it. But I wanted to point out just a little bit of information that kind of caught our attention as we were looking into this. The Center for Applied Linguistics published this study, their research, and it showed that a minimum of six years in a DLI program is needed in order to show significant positive influence on a student's academic outcomes. And so part of, one of the factors that may be contributing to this right now is just, Lincoln is one of our most mobile schools. It actually is our most mobile school. We have more students move in and out of Lincoln than any other school in Davis School District. As we just took a little bit of data as far as the average time, you know, the Center for Applied Linguistics is looking for six years. Right now, our average student is two and a half years in the program. And the research, as you dig into it, shows that there's possibly, is detrimental to students if they're not in it as long. And that's something that's in that same study. You know, you can see the average grade level entry and exit point, it's pretty young. They go from two Spanish immersion classes down to one in fifth and sixth grade because of attrition through that. And so that's a really big factor of something that, again, we just want to study a little bit more. Recently, Lincoln was designated as a CSI school, which is comprehensive support and improvement for low-performing student groups. And they target specific areas and identify schools that need to focus on certain areas. The ELL population was part of that. But just, you know, going back to that initial research, there's typically, you show great outcomes as students stay. The longer they stay in the programs, the better. Right now, our data there is just inconsistent. You can see that, just looking at a cadence reading by itself, you can see that in some places, our average DLI proficiency is higher than our traditional. And in some places, in our later grades, traditional is higher than DLI, which typically isn't the norm for DLI programs. So again, just something to study. We have, you know, looking at the makeup of the classes, there's economically, higher percentage of economically disadvantaged in the traditional classrooms than there are in the DLI classrooms. Higher percentage of students that are receiving special education services in the traditional classrooms versus the DLI classrooms. And behavior is something that typically, your more intensive behavior students don't go into the DLI program. And that causes difficulty in balancing classes, something that the administration struggles with a little bit because the traditional teachers receive a higher portion of students that may have more challenges than that. And so like I said, that's just a little bit of what's caught our eye as we've gone into that. In particular, that mobility as a factor, that's maybe why we're not reaping the benefits there. We want to look into that deeper. So we propose, want to ask that to initiate a study of the Spanish Dual Language Immersion Program at Lincoln Elementary, which may include closure or consolidation of the program.
Okay, thank you. That was a great explanation, so. Okay, Ms. Barber?
I just have a comment. That was really thorough. Didn't anticipate you to go that deep into what we had talked about, so thank you. Lincoln's one of my schools that I hold really dear to my heart and I think everybody knows that. I've had quite a few teachers and parents reach out right when this hit the agenda, which hasn't been very long, so I haven't had a lot of time to engage with them. And so I just wanted to really clearly say that this is the beginning of the study. Like, there's going to be lots of times, I think when we first opened this discussion up, I said over and over to superintendency and directors, like, we need to work with parents because this, we're not sure what the solution is. We're investigating it for all those reasons you just stated. And our support of students at Lincoln isn't going to change. And our support of helping Spanish-speaking students learn English and immerse them in that and make sure they reap the benefits of being, having dual language as a skill that's amazing, won't change. It just might look different than a traditional dual immersion program. And so I understand there's so much heartache about that. Parents reached out that have students in that program. I have students in immersion. And when you hear any change, it really, it's frightening. So I think we'll take it a careful approach. We're going to have open houses, we're going to meet with parents and we're going to see the best way that we can support all students at that school. And maybe it's not dual language immersion, but it's a unique Davis approach to supporting Lincoln Elementary.
Yeah, and if I may, just adding to that, right? I mean, obviously, as a school district, we care about students first, right? We want to look into this and do what's best by our students there. I think some of the things we have to study is what is our approach? If indeed we talk about consolidation or closure of the program at Lincoln, what is it that we're doing for these students to provide them with an experience where they can still maybe utilize those skills, right? Our MLL students, there's a high population of MLL students. So how are we approaching them and supporting them in programs? And there's some research that, trying to get my hands on already on that, to start looking at maybe what are some of the best approaches. That's what we want to find.
I think that, what you're alluding to is really great. It aligns with, we know their feeder patterns. We know what junior high they're going to, but we know what high school they're going to. So we can make sure we're connecting them with Spanish classes and they're getting credit. And they're aligned in ways that they would have benefited as dual immersion students and still get those benefits, but just in a different way. So we have a lot of good things working for us.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Ms. Powell?
Yeah, so this daddy mentioned a minimum of six years in DLI to show significant difference in academic outcomes. in academic outcomes. First of all, it sounds like academic outcomes, at least you were looking at Acadian's reading. Is it, is it in all subjects, or is it reading, or is, are we mainly focused on language acquisition?
I, I, I think they're primarily talking about language arts-type subjects with writing and, and reading in there. I, I, I reference, again, that's a, that's a national study that I'm referencing there, not, not just a Utah one. So I admittedly haven't dug into all the data on that too much there, but I, but I know the focus was more on those language, content, and language, and reading and writing.
Yeah, I remember years ago, you know, when they first started these DLI programs in Utah, they talked about that, how even just studying a second language helps, helps the students just achieve better academically, but there's always the question, well, is that correlate, is correlation not causation? You know, is it because the type of parents that put those students in the program? I was just curious if they have updated data. If you don't know, that's fine.
I, I don't know off the top of my head, no.
Okay. And then, do you know, have you, have you looked into maybe, I don't even know if we have Title I funding where we have it right now, because I know things are going on at the federal level. But if there is, because I know there's after-school programs usually, that, Lincoln's a Title I school, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Could, have we looked into maybe incorporating Spanish language instruction in those after-school programs, if they're gonna still exist?
Well, and, and the after-school program is more tied to the Title I than, it is definitely tied to the Title I and not the DLI.
Right, for sure.
Now, if, if there's an adjustment to that as, as we look at the options and outcomes of that, that, that's something that we can definitely look into.
Because even, those after-school programs, my understanding is, even though it comes from Title I funding, it has to be offered to all students in the school, is that correct? Those after-school programs?
Uh, yes. Sue, I think you could, it's, it's offered to everybody, yeah.
Yeah. I just, just throwing that out there as a possibility. Again, I know things are in flux right now with the federal program funding.
Yeah, and the federal, I mean, luckily, this year with Title I funds, actually, our funds increased this year, which was a pleasant surprise for all of our Title I schools, actually a pretty significant increase. But we don't know if that's gonna continue right now, but, but that was a good thing for us.
Just for this year, that's okay?
Yeah, it's year to year.
I want to clarify that that's after a significant decrease as well. So that, it, it definitely felt like an increase, but compared to the substantial decrease the year before.
Thank you.
I have one other question.
Ms. Stevens?
Where is the next closest Spanish immersion elementary school?
Um, we have Sandsprings, thank you.
Sandsprings, okay. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, can we have a motion?
I move to approve the study of the Spanish Dual Language Immersion Program at Lincoln Elementary School.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Barber and a second by Ms. Powell to initiate a study of the Spanish Dual Language Immersion Program at Lincoln Elementary. Are there any other comments or discussion? Okay, all right, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Forsgren. Okay, Mr. Tim Luffel has our next few items, and we're gonna start with Caseville Junior High Gymnasium and go on from there. Mr. Luffel.
I might mention that this project and the next two are the last major bond projects from the 2022 bond, so it seems weird, like we just passed that bond and now we're getting ready to approve the final three projects on it.
Spent all the money.
Yes. Five hundred, that money can go fast.
Yeah.
So the first one tonight is Caseville Junior. We're gonna build a standalone gym between Caseville Junior and Columbia Elementary. The exciting thing about this gym is that we're partnering with Caseville City to build a double gym, so that will serve not only our students during the day, but the community in the evening. So we're doing that currently at Horizon Junior High with West Point City, and these cooperative partnerships really just serve all of our patrons so much better. So we've gone through a process to select the construction manager, general contractor, and the committee is recommending that the board accept Hogan and Associates as the CMGC for the Caseville Gym Project.
I'm trying to see if there's a dollar amount there.
No, the dollar amount will come later when they do the maximum gross price.
Okay, so just have Hogan and Associates. Okay, any questions on this? Ms. Barber?
I just have to make a comment about, I'm really excited about this project. I started working, advocating for this years ago, and I was on Caseville City Council, which seems like forever ago, and it's just in a really good location in Caseville, so I'm just so glad we're not missing this opportunity. And it's interesting to be on both sides of it, like the city side and now the school side. And anyway, I can see the benefits to both, so thank you for your work on this.
Any other comments? This is an exciting one, yeah, having been in that gym, it's interesting.
And Sony did, I guess we should have said that, too. So Sony, you don't have to go upstairs to old creaky floors.
Very interesting gym at Caseville Junior, but, but loved by the people there.
Lots of good memories in there.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain.
I have a comment.
Okay.
I've coached many junior darts, junior jazz games on that court, and there is a home-court advantage because there's some dead spots that the ball just stays right on the floor when you're going for a layup, so.
I actually was, I should have said this, I went to Caseville City Council meeting when they were talking about this, just to advocate and represent, and somebody caught me in the hall, and I know this happens anytime we change buildings. I know it's not unique there, but they were so sad at the thought of, you know, that is the floor that my grandpa played on and bled on the half-court line, and, you know, and those are good memories, but I, I am confident we will make lots more memories in that beautiful double gym.
In the new gym, yes.
Anyway, it'll be really fun.
Yep. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Hogan and Associates' construction for the Caseville Junior High Gymnasium Project.
Okay, there's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Who's, who seconded it? Was that you?
Michelle.
Oh, it was Ms. Barber. Okay, and there's been a motion by Ms. Price and a second by Ms. Barber to approve Hogan and Associates, and Associates for constructing the new Caseville Junior High Gymnasium. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes, and we'll give you the next one. Bayview?
Okay, Bayview Elementary. This project involves adding six classrooms to the school, as well as remodeling the admin office suite and covering the interior courtyard at Bayview Elementary. The committee got together and recommends Northridge Construction to be the CGMC on this project.
Okay, any questions? Okay, if seen no questions, we will entertain a motion.
I move to approve Northridge Construction for the Bayview Elementary addition and remodel project.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Price, a second by Ms. Hogan to approve the Northridge Construction, approve Northridge Construction for the Bayview Elementary addition and remodel. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, Burton Elementary.
Yes, I wish our former administrator of facilities could be here, Mr. Payne. I can't tell you how many times I heard him say, "The entrance and offices of Burton Elementary are the worst in the school district ever, ever." So this is going to fix that. The new administrative suites are vestibule, as well as a better identifiable entrance to the school. The committee is recommending Willmang Construction for this project.
Okay, any questions on the Burton Elementary? Construction. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Oh, question, Ms. Stevens.
Funding for this project, where does that come from?
School bond.
This is also part of the bond. All of these items are from the bond.
These three are all, these are our last three bond projects.
The last three. Okay, any other questions?
I just want to make a comment.
Ms. Powell?
But I totally agree, this is a long time coming.
Yes.
This community is gonna be very excited about this.
Yes, yes, they are. There will not be the same sadness to see this go.
I do have a quick question. How long, so it looks like construction is planned to begin January of next year, how long does this anticipate? Does anybody know to last?
Weston would know that.
Mr. Weeks, will you give us the answer on that?
Yes, there's a few variables, construction, like wintertime construction variables, and so ideally, yeah, if we can get an early start, perhaps this fall or the first part of the next year, we could be done by the following year, ready for school in August.
Wow, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weeks. Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve Willmang Construction for the Burton Elementary addition and remodel project.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Powell and a second by Ms. Price to approve Willmang Construction for the Burton Elementary addition and remodel project. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that motion passes unanimously. Sunset Elementary?
Hey, after the consolidation of Fremont Elementary into Doxy and Sunset, we've taken some of the proceeds that we received from the sale of Fremont to try to spruce up Doxy and Sunset Elementarys. And so this is the, one of the first projects that we're looking at the landscaping around Sunset on the south and west sides of that school. The committee's recommending Wasatch West Contracting in the amount of $181,850.19 for that project.
Okay, any questions on this landscaping? No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the bid from Wasatch West Contracting for the amount of $181,850.19.
Okay, is there a second? A second. Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Hogan and a second by Ms. Stevens to approve the bid from Wasatch West Contracting in the amount of $181,850.19 for Sunset Elementary landscaping upgrade. Any more discussion?
Can I just?
Yes.
I, I just want to say, I, I'm really excited to see they're upgrading with low waters erascaping. This is something, when I did my own home many years ago, tried to zariskate a lot of it, and I, I know the district already does a lot of, they try to improve things with zariskaping, but I'm just happy to see this trend.
Yeah, that's exciting. Okay, all in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion passes for Sunset Elementary. Okay, the next one, Mr. Luffel, UDOT.
Yes, a much anticipated project that's going to start in a year or so, an I-15 remodel and expansion from North Salt Lake or 600 North and Salt Lake all the way through Parish Lane. Part of that process will be to, they will need some land that is currently being utilized at Woods Cross High School. UDOT agents met with us, they have not hired the contractor as of yet that will do this project, and so the timing isn't quite known yet on this project, but as part of it, their evaluators look at what land they will need, they do an appraisal of the land that they are taking from different entities or proposing to take, they do an appraisal on that. We ran that appraisal by our third-party real estate contractor that we work with. He felt that the offer was fair. This offer includes not only the land they'll be taking, also gives us some money for some parking lot time that they'll need to take our parking lot to stage the project. We will do everything we can to work with the contractor once they're selected to try to centralize the work in the summer as much as possible. Woods Cross parking already is tight, and so if they take some, it's gonna be, it'll be difficult for, so hopefully we can arrange that around the summer schedules. It also, this offer also includes money for trees that they have to take. We'll have to relocate the Woods Cross High School sign that's in front of the school. That will be something that will be part of the land that they have to take. So in total, the offer is $756,700, but because we are proposing to accept their offer tonight, they give us a $3,000 bonus. So the total offer would be $759,700 to accept the offer that they're making on the land and the improvements they'll need to make.
Well, we don't often get bonuses.
Do we get an improved sign, or is it just gonna be the same sign?
They're just giving us money to move the sign, so not replace the sign, so we'll have to.
The sign is fine-looking, I was just thinking it'd be nice to get newer, fancier one, if they were willing.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question. Are there any expected expenses from them using our parking lot? Like, are we worried about it causing damage or, you know, needing to be resurfaced, things like that?
We wouldn't anticipate a resurfacing or damage, but they, UDOT in the past has been very good at fixing whatever they mess up. So they give us money upfront, say like for trees, they won't replace the trees, but they'll give us money for the trees that they have to take down, fencing, temporary fencing for things that are in the way. So they've been very good to work with in those areas.
Great. Okay, seen, oh, another question, Ms. Mercer.
Just, we don't have much option as to whether or not to do this, we just have an option as to whether or not we accept their offer at this point?
Technically, we could even challenge it, and they have the power of eminent domain, and so we could go through that whole process. We could get our own appraisal, and that's why we ran it by our third-party, they didn't do a formal appraisal, but he knows the square footage cost and things out of the market. So typically, as long as the offer's fair, we've, then we've accepted it in the first.
Makes sense.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a quick comment. So in my, in our own family, we had our family business, the city, they wanted part of our piece of land, and they made an offer, and it was pretty reasonable, but if I remember right, we pushed back, hey, can you give a little more? Do we do any of that?
We haven't, because we'd have to pay for an appraisal, so if we got more, we might spend more on getting the commercial appraisal than the extra we could get. We could try.
Because I, because I remember, you know, as long as you're, if you have already relationships with some commercial realtors, then they'll often just do that for free, at least, in my experience, maybe not with you guys, but.
The other thought is, the amount of land they're taking is a half acre.
Yeah, so it's not very much.
So it's not a huge amount in total, so if they gave us a little bit more, it wouldn't amount to a lot, but it is an option we have.
Why not? In our experience, we were able to get more, because we were like, hey, we think it was worth a little bit more, and that's what I remember, anyway.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the purchase of parcels 1582, 1582E, and 1582 RAF for the total compensation of $759,700.
Okay, thank you for the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Stevens and a second by Ms. Price. Any other comments? I, I would just like to.
Oh, go ahead. Oh, I was just wondering, can you ask for, can you just say, hey, can we add a little bit more for this? Or is that just out of, you know, not what you guys normally do, or, just given my own experience?
We just can't accept this offer if we want to ask.
Right.
And then we would lose the bonus, which is not a lot of money, but we can ask, yes.
That's true.
So it depends on what the motion from the board would be.
What the bonus is, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
But like in the future, just keep that in mind when you, when they do offers like that.
I will say, I think our representative that we run things past is really well-cued in and of what fair market price is, and it basically kind of offers that benefit to us, even if this isn't a full appraisal. So I feel, I feel confident with this particular one. If it was maybe a bigger piece or more money, it might be worth, but I feel, I feel like we, we got, we were, we were well-represented, it's not like we're just accepting it without getting any.
Right, like given, especially if there's a bonus for today, then, yeah, I'm not gonna bother with it, but just for future purposes, when this happens, just keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and, and I'm glad that we have the relationship that we can really try to work with them on doing this as much as possible in the summer because of the parking issues there at most of our high schools, so, thank you. Okay, so we have the motion, Ms. Stevens, you made the motion, and the second was Ms. Price, so all in favor of the motion to approve the purchase of parcels 1582, 1582E, and 1582 RAF for a total of about a half acre for the total compensation of $759,700. All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Okay, Mr. Enoffriel, you ready for this? Okay, he's coming back about our policy on electronic devices, so. Okay, he's coming back about um, our policy on um, electronic devices, so...
Thank you, President, Superintendent, members of the board. Uh, just a reminder to, to get to our second reading, we have to pass on first. It doesn't mean you agree with it right now, it just means we're, we're good with getting to the second reading. We have a month before school starts, state law requires us to have a policy put in place for the being of school. So unless we have extra meetings, we gotta do it this time and next time to pass it.
And, yeah, so we can pass it, but still make changes, and then what we're aiming to do is give direction to Mr. Enoffrio tonight on what changes we would like. So, we can go ahead and, and start with more discussion, or we can start with um, a motion. And then continue to the, the discussion, so... I, I would like to give everybody the opportunity to um, talk about cell phones, and we can do it that way if you'd like. Okay.
Can I just start out, just being on the policy committee?
Okay.
I just kind of, as we, as the board had some discussion during workshop, I just kind of um, identified at some key points of where we might want idea, have an idea of where the whole board, how they stand on, so as, so that gives us direction as a policy committee where to go, and Mr. Enoffrio too, of course. So just, uh, so the first thing is junior high lunch, that's kind of a big thing. Can we just go across and see how everyone feels about junior high lunch? Do we want to allow cell phones, which is where, how the current policy is, or no?
Or go a little stricter? Okay, we can start, we can start there. Unless anyone else has a comment relating to that very thing. Ms. Stevens, go ahead.
Sure. I am for more autonomy for the school, so I say that they can use this, their phones during school, and if the school...
Junior high.
Yeah, would like to make them restrict, that's their decision.
Okay.
So for you, leave it up to the school, so yes, so right now, let's not...
To the current?
Your vote would be to restrict to lunch.
Okay.
Um, I prefer um, no cell phones at lunch.
Okay. Um, let's go down to Ms. Barber.
For ju- junior high lunch.
Junior high lunch.
I personally think that monitoring that at lunch is not feasible, and I, I think it's okay to have them at lunch. I would put that in line with the high school policy for junior highs.
Okay. Ms. Mercer.
I think in an ideal world, I'd love to have a bell-to-bell policy for the school lunch, but I would be in favor of getting feedback from our administrators on the feasibility of, of the implementation of that.
Thank you.
Um, I think I would favor um, a bell-to-bell uh, restriction on that. In some ways, I think that might be easier across the board, but I'm obviously welcome, would welcome feedback.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Price?
Okay. Um, I would say allow for students to use their cell phones at lunch. I like the idea of um, some options and autonomy as well. Um, but I am also open to um, hearing feedback from administrators, teachers, parents, whoever, whoever we may need to get feedback from.
Okay. Um, I personally would like to see a bell-to-bell in junior high, but I am very concerned about uh, the enforcement of that, so I, and, and the reason that I am is I, I just want to go far enough to, to really um, see if we can make a change, a, a big change. And, but I am definitely open, um, I'm worried about the enforcement piece, so I would love to hear from our administrators about if this is even possible, so that's my feeling on that.
So I, so I hear, just for purpose of our policy committee, for Ms. Mercer, you're like, you lean towards not during lunch, but open to feedback. Is that what I hear, or you're just open?
Yes, I lean towards not having them available at lunch.
Okay, and then Ms. Um, Mr. President Gerard, you lean towards not, same thing? Okay. But wanna hear more?
Yes, I would like to hear more, cause I, I'm worried about the enforcement of that.
Okay. And then, okay. All right, so should we just clarify? So I, I have... Um, I, I gotta think of last names.
Yeah.
Ms. Stevens, yes, allow for lunch, me, no allow for lunch, uh, Ms. Barber, yes, allow for lunch, Ms. Mercer, no, but open to feedback. Ms. Hogan, um, yes.
Allow for lunch?
No.
Or no allow?
No.
Don't, but open to feedback.
Bell-to-bell, yeah.
Okay, and then um, no, also no, no allow for lunch, but open to feedback.
But, open for feedback.
I also do wanna say, I did wanna comment, I really think this cellphone policy has kind of been a big community deal, and so I think we should take and approach as much as we, we possibly can to get feedback, and not just from administrators, but also from our teachers, staff, parents, and students. And I know that's a little bit difficult with the timeframe that we have, because it's summer, and we gotta get this passed by law before school starts, but if there's anything we can do, I don't know if we can send out an email survey to, to people and see if they answer it, and maybe, I don't know, press release or something. Because I do think, um, I am totally open to changing my mind if I do feel like the community's giving me more impact, input, and like other perspectives, too, so...
Okay. Yep.
President, would you mind taking a, a board vote? It, it looks to me like it's four-three, but if we just put it on the record, and everybody can change your minds in a month, it's fine.
Just for clarification, we're voting on this so that we have a first reading accomplished, and then...
We, we have to do that, we have to vote on the...
So that I can adapt the, the policy, and I can bring something to you next time, if you can change your mind on it.
So we vote on the first?
I think Julie had a few other items that she wanted to talk about.
Okay, here we go. So I wanted to give everyone an opportunity to talk about this, you know, give their thoughts on it, a little statement, but we do need to pass what's before us, so before we can make changes. And then we're trying to give you, so I, I don't know that the, the order matters, but we can go ahead and take the motion now on the policy before us, is that what you're saying?
So you're, President, you're just giving me instruction on how to write this for the next time?
Right.
And then you can, it looks like there are cabinned in issues here, the first one being junior high lunch.
Yeah, so, but were you saying, take a vote on the policy, or take a vote on just the junior high? Is that what you meant?
Yep.
Okay, I, I thought it was pretty clear, four to three, but...
Can we do that if it's not on our agenda?
I, I, I don't know.
Well, you're, you're giving me instruction on how to write this for you next time.
Okay.
I think they would just make a motion on a first reading of the policy as written.
Yeah, that's what I thought we had to do.
I mean, we could each go down.
Yeah, which, which we just did, I thought.
Yes, uh, well, but I do think that, that in public meeting and you, in the deliberation, we just wanna clarify the board's will for the future, for the policy committee. And then I, cause I, there may, this is just the junior high portion, and then there may be other portions to discuss, and it'd be just be good for the policy committee and to have this discussion in public, so there's a good direction, but I...
Okay, I, I felt like we did that, but we can do that again, okay? Ms. Stevens?
So which way are you wanting?
Give your junior high opinion, again.
Of, of?
As a yay or nay on...
Cell phone during lunch.
Okay. Okay?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
So, no allow cellphone lunch, that's where I'm...
Okay. Uh, myself, no on cell phones during lunch for junior high?
I am a yes.
I am a no.
I'm a no.
I'm a yes.
Okay. Okay. I think that was very clear, and um, we can move on to our statements, more discussion, uh, but we will need a motion at some point, so um...
Do we, do we, can we motion to approve it and then have a discussion?
Yes, on, yeah, it, yeah, definitely. But, but what we're approving is the first reading, that's before us on this policy, so if we're ready to do that, I'll entertain a motion, but we'll still have discussion. And, and I wanted to hear from everyone their thoughts, so... Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve five S dash one oh five student electronic devices on first reading.
I second.
Okay. Um, so we have a motion by Ms. Price and a second by Ms. Mercer to approve uh, five, policy five S dash one oh five student electron, electronic devices on first reading. Is there any more discussion, questions? Um, and then I'll let each one give some statements, but any other questions? Julie, Ms. Powell?
I just wanna make a clarification statement for public listening to this. We are passing this as is, that doesn't mean we are agreeing to this, we clearly don't agree to it as is. We're only doing this so we can make our policy on time. It's a procedural reason why we're doing this, we're actually not passing this as written, no.
This is a first reading, not the final, okay?
And changes between first reading and second and final reading happen all the time.
And they can be large.
That part is normal.
That's why you do it.
They can be large. Okay. Any other discussion? And then I'll let everyone kind of make their statement or comments. Okay, Ms. Price?
I have a question.
Okay.
Um, Dr. Linford, is it, is it possible for us to be able to do a survey in the next week and a half?
Who would we survey, I think we need some clarity on that.
Yeah, um, it depends on who we're hoping to get feedback from. Uh, certainly administrators, we can get, we can do a survey. Parents to have a reasonable, what we would call is a scientific level sampling, it would be worthwhile, that'd be difficult. I think that by and large, uh, parents have been supportive of, of cellphone limitations, at least in school. We haven't tried one bell-to-bell yet, but my, my sense is based on prior history that the experiment won't, won't be too much for parents. Um, I think the idea is, and we discussed this a little bit in workshop, the idea is, you can have an aspirational policy that is, that is really challenging for, for administrators uh, to, you know, to administer. And, and I think that's where the board can is grappling with, like, wha- what's even reasonable in that space, and so I do think it's worthwhile to, to talk to administrators, and you know, we, we've been, I have my sense of how, how administrators would feel about that, um, but I, I've certainly been surprised before, I'd be really interested to know what they think, and maybe we, we design a quick survey that gets at what we want to know from them.
I, I think it will be a lot easier to implement a policy if we do have parent input as well.
Yep.
I just, so I would like to have something at least go out, so that we can receive that input.
Right, because as parents, we are checking our email during the summer from schools.
Some.
Some of us.
There's also the option of community councils that represent our parents.
Much lower survey turnout, dramatically lower in the summer.
Lisa said, community councils.
Community councils have already been pretty involved in this, like every...
They, they have been talking about this for a while.
That's why I feel like I, I would hesitate to do a rushed, huge parent survey. I just, I think that could do more harm than good, truthfully, because it's like, we're putting it out, we have a very short timeline, we don't have a lot of time to digest the feedback and make sure we get it there. I, I like getting, hearing from the administrators, especially we're hung up on this one specific thing that we're asking them to implement.
Enforcement of this, yes.
So I think, I think we narrow the scope and we, we get back, feedback from administrators, and then we take this year, we, we get the policy done when we need it to be done legally, we take the year, and we, we encourage community councils to keep reaching out to their parents however they see fit. Like, my junior high sent an email to every single parent, and maybe they could do that, too.
President Gerard?
Oh, go ahead. Yes, Ms. Hogan?
I was just gonna make the comment that um, most, most, a lot of the junior highs have already done this process with the parents, I think, involved, and so we do have a good feel, I feel like, from the parents of how they feel about these kind of policies.
I, I just have to say, though, the policy they have is very loose compared to what we are, are planning to implement.
Yeah, the policy...
We're going from bell-to-bell, it's sounding like.
The policy that they have is what we're making for high school.
True, but they are very strict about the classroom aspect.
Well, we have to be strict about the classroom because that's the law.
Right, but I'm saying the um, the ones that the junior highs have already implemented were not, that, that was before the law, and they all were, that I know of, were pretty strict on the classroom, and they made sure they had parent input, and that they had teacher input, and um, so a lot of that. So yes, we are adding lunchtime in between classes, but there has already been a lot of discussion in the community about cell phones.
But I think it's interesting that there has been a lot of discussion, and they ended up with having it be that they could have them during classes and at lunch. So we are definitely tightening that, and I think it would be beneficial to have some feedback from the community before we make that decision.
I, I just think the timeline is gonna, is really tricky.
What do you think?
I think we either do it right, or we, we don't do it.
I, I also think schools do have that option of deciding for themselves, this is our district policy, our school has a tighter policy, but once we make that decision, that's what everybody has to do.
Superintendent?
I, I, I have confidence that we could get administrator feedback, and even, even to a degree, some teacher feedback, but even teachers would be a question. I don't, I don't have confidence that we could design us an instrument, we could get enough feedback from parents and, and analyze that, and even, even in a simple way in the next two weeks. Especially given that uh, Dr. Toon is on a boat in Alaska, and, and Dr. Wilkie is in Tennessee.
Bring him back.
So...
If we were to just send them a survey that showed them the two options, bell-to-bell, or have it during lunch, which would you want for your child?
I, 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 I really lean that this is, this is an implementation thing on administration. I mean, parents, parents have, have all of the right to work with their kids on everything else. This is pa, this is administrators that we're putting it on to really oversee at lunchtime. I can't even practically see how they are going to do that, to be honest, cause I'm at the junior highs and schools all the ti, at lunchtime, all the time, and I think, what do we, what are we really expecting them to do? Is this hall mon, like, table monitoring back and forth to kick them off their phones during lunch? I mean, that's, that's why I really just wanna hear from, from principals on this. It just, the logistics of it are not working for me, and I also think, we're talking about mental health, I think, you know, having a kid check in with their parents during lunch can be beneficial to their mental health, too. I, I, I really feel strongly about that one, so I'm excited to hear from administrators. I just think parents have had such an opportunity to be involved and give feedback already, I don't, I don't know that we need to rush something.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? I have a couple, but... Ms. Powell?
I mean, um, there are a few board members who have mentioned how important it is to have our community behind this. So I do think a good faith effort is better than nothing, that's just my opinion. Even if we can't get it perfect, at least it's something.
A good faith effort on surveying the...
Just to get out to our community, yeah, just say, hey, we're doing this, we know there's not a lot of time, but what do you think? I'm, I, I would probably see my emails, but I'm, you know, my kids are doing some summer classes, but I probably would check them anyway.
Do people not check their email, like, on a regular basis?
I do.
Cause regardless of who the email comes from, I see my email every day.
I tell you what, if you sent it to the kids, they would tell their parents, fill out that survey.
Superintendent?
So don't send it to the kids.
Um, I, I think the earliest that we'd really, uh, we'd have a team, uh, you know, we can, we can get with our assessment department, see who's in town, uh, but that's really where we're at. They were, they, obviously, we're not expecting to be doing this work in the next couple of weeks, so they are... We want them to go on vacation in July, that's kinda when we tell them to go, and so that, and so they're gone. Um, so I, I, I would have a hard time answering that right now, we'll have to do a little bit of work to find out who's in town. I could use my country wisdom, I, 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 I am a trained researcher, Dr. Montero's a trained researcher. Um, we could, we could put together an instrument that we're comfortable with. It's, it's distribution and collection and, and some of that that I have more concerns with. And, and sample size in the summer is just interesting, so we'll, uh, we'll, uh, no question, we'll, we'll give it a go, we'll have a conversation about it tomorrow morning to see if we can get an instrument together.
What about rather than a formal survey, we put out in our board briefs, and we put on our social media, reach out to your school board member if you have opinions on school cellphone policy? I mean, that...
That'd be something, not the scientific data you're looking for, but for sure.
Well, I don't think we're gonna get the scientific data either way, is my concern.
Well, I think the good faith effort part of that would be, we're, we'll try, we'll see what we can do, but we'll definitely ask administrators, I can do that right away, and then we'll, um, we'll, uh, we'll work on that tomorrow morning.
Okay. All right. I, I just wanted to add, just reiterate some of the things that, that I've actually said before in the workshop. I, um, really, that education piece is really important to me, if we could um, let our students somehow, not let them, but it's required to take a course so that they could understand uh, the effects that irresponsible phone use and excessive phone use is having on their mental health. I think that is very important, and I think we should definitely pursue that. on their mental health. I think that is very important and I think we should definitely pursue that. Um, again, because we live in a digital world and the phones aren't going anywhere. But, um, my, my next big concern is for administrators and teachers on the enforcement piece. I, I, I think it's, um, idealistic and I would love to see bell to bell, elementary and junior high. I just don't know if it's realistic, realistic, if it can even be done. But, um, I also know that there's going to be legislation coming and I think that might be what the legislation is. Um, and, and wow, any of this is gonna take huge adjust, adjustment. But I, I would do anything to improve the mental health of our students. And, um, I, I wish I knew the, all the answers, but we spend so much effort, so much time, so much money, so much care for treating these mental health issues. That if just something like this could help, I would do it. I would do it. So. Anyway, it, it's a hard issue and I, and I really can't wait to hear from our administrators.
Are there other elements we need to discuss? I will say on that note that, um, and I think it's, I, I have a lot of faith in the parents of Davis County. And this conversation, 100% of the solution is in their hands if they want it.
Yep.
It bell to bell, no phones, is 100% within their purview to do it themselves.
Yep. I agree. We, we would have to have buy-in from the parents. So. Okay, so we have, any other comments?
Uh, just on the administrative burdens, I was just, just a thought, could we hire someone just for the junior highs? Like just a parent who can come in and do that? So it's not on the principals and the administration? Is that just someone at a very cheap rate? Just a thought.
I don't know.
I don't know. Should we want to move on to the other elements? We've got two more elements.
Yeah, we need to move on to the do you have other elements and, and, but let's, we've got a motion on the floor though.
These are about this though.
Yeah, there was just, I had a couple other elements-
Okay.
That for our policy committee, if we can get, we can figure out where each board member's at, that would be helpful. Um, so on the principal discretion to allow cellphone usage during prohibited times. To, you know, make exceptions. So for example, um, digital literacy class or possibly, and this is a big one, taking picture, submitting your homework during school. That is something that some teachers may really want to continue to allow. Um, I, I do see some potential pushback on that. So where do we want to head with that? Just leave it as is? Right now it's written to just allow the principals to, to give that discretion. And as Ms. Mercer mentioned in the, in workshop, do we want to restrict that to only for academic uses? Because we do know that sometimes teachers will say, "Hey, you finish all this. Um, as incentive, you can play a game on your phone." Is that just, or is that just out of the question? That, that aspect of the policy where principals can make exceptions, we might want to discuss.
Board, any input on those? Ms. Stevens?
Yeah, I think if we're saying no phones, it means no phones. Like you, you're not using it, you can use your computer to take pictures. And maybe, like I said earlier, at the high school level, we allow that, but during junior high, I think they get distracted too easily. Um, I am, like I said, more for the school deciding exactly how they want their policy to look. But if we are implementing a strict policy, I think it, it needs to be that you don't pull your phone out during class, especially in the junior high.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, any other thoughts on, on these two?
I wanted to-
Elements?
Sorry, I feel like I'm, if anyone wants to talk, just go ahead. But, um, I, um, my experience with one of my kids, um, I felt like I had to, I had to take away this child's cellphone. And then I had to contact the teacher and say, "Hey, this is a situation. Can you accommodate?" So, so my student can, um, you know, submit their homework without the phone. And they were totally willing, but the problem was for my own student who wasn't super proactive, if it gets difficult, if it's not easy, not gonna do it. So if we have a culture of still allowing phones to do that, it becomes, you know, the exception for the student who doesn't have a phone. So just keep that in mind. Um, at the same time, you know, my kids love being able to submit things on their phone. It's way, way easier than any district issued devices. And I've heard from teachers too, they know it's, it's much easier. So I don't really know where I'm at with that. I kind of would love to hear-
Well, maybe we could add that, to, ask for that feedback when we send out the survey to our administrators.
So currently, the, the policy is written to allow the principals to make that decision. So that's the decision we need to, um, discuss as a board. Do we want to just leave it as is? Or not?
I think my opinion is to leave it as is and give that autonomy to principals.
Okay. We heard from Ms. Stevens. Okay, Michelle?
Okay, I agree with Ms. Price, leave as is.
Uh, Ms. Mercer?
I, I would just want to add the word for academic reasons.
Okay.
Rather than just-
Okay.
The open, and I lean more towards Ms. Stevens.
Yeah, I think if we start allowing this exception about putting homework in, then we're just gonna have, everyone's just gonna have their phones in all their classes. Um, so I, I don't like that part, but I'm fine with if there's a certain app that a teacher wants to, wants to use for a certain subject, then he goes through the principal and having those, those kind of exceptions. But not the, just so they can turn in their homework.
Okay. Um, you know, I, I trust our principals and I would say as is, but I, but I can't because I think it does water down the, the policy that we're saying we want. So.
Hopefully everything we're doing is academic.
But for apps, there's so many, but there's so many different, I mean, there could be totally different scenarios um, that the principal would come up with. So maybe I'm, I'm fine with that part. Um, but I, I'm not that familiar with, because I, with students having to have a phone to turn in their homework. Do you guys have other experience with that, with, with what Ms. Powell is talking about? Because I don't have much experience with that.
Yes, absolutely. I, as, as a parent of a child without a phone, I've often been told like, "Oh, I need a phone to be at school." And I don't think that should ever be the case.
Yep, okay. Okay.
And we do, we have a generation of young people who will choose to write whole papers on their phone uh, versus on a laptop that we, that we provide for them.
Yeah.
So I, I think part of the balance, and I think that goes back to the class, this, this is maybe one of the most important learning tools that's ever existed. And so I think there's this balance between we're gonna make it just extremely difficult to use something that's very elegant and simple. And, and, you know, in the name of a, of a, an across-the-board ban. And I think there's definitely some elements where, no question, we need, we need to get cellphones out of students' lives and out of their hands. But, but if there's a space where I think I want it in their hands, it's in, it's in the learning space. You know, and I just think we have work to do, that, that frankly, nobody's really dug in and done that part of this equation, which is, I think, the most important part of the equation.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, there's some direction on that, so, um, okay.
President Gerard?
Yes. Did you get, did you get clear enough direction? No, you want us to vote?
Can I suggest that you have a vote-
You want to vote on that again?
Changing section 5.2?
Okay.
Or leaving it as is?
Okay.
And if you want to change, then you can have a substitute motion to say what the change would be.
Okay.
Because I'm trying to count here.
So I move that we make it changed, that we change section 5.2.
5.2 on?
You, you, that's it. I don't say what I want to change it.
So the threshold would be whether or not we change it, yeah?
Okay, I would like to move, is this a formal vote? Okay. I move that we make, we vote to change-
So substitute motion?
Substitute, thank you.
You're, you're making a substitute motion to the one on the, on the table?
So substitute motion that we make and a change to section 5.2.
Okay.
And what would that change be?
The change is, and the change is-
And that the change is that it-
He doesn't want the change.
I thought he didn't want the change either.
I think, I'm just trying to figure out if there's a majority of changing it or not.
So we're just voting on whether or not to change it.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question though? If somebody's reading the minutes and we just say we vote, we passed a motion to change it. The person reading the minutes would have no idea what it is we're referring to.
To change it to what?
I'm, I'm, I make a substitute motion that we change section 5.2. Um, the second sentence that it says principals also have the discretion to designate certain times or areas on the school campus for student use of electronic devices for academic reasons. Um, or for academic uses during school hours.
Okay, and on first reading. So-
On first reading.
On first reading.
So the substitute motion would be to accept the policy except for this change on first reading?
Yep.
I'm not putting words in your mouth, but that, that's what we would-
I appreciate, thank you.
Ms. Gerard, may I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
So, uh, Ms. Mercer, so would that allow for then for academic reasons to take a picture of your homework and submit it?
So we need a second on that motion first.
That's an academic reason.
Yeah, so that's what I mean. So clarifying question.
Ms. Mercer made a motion, but we didn't get a second on that motion?
No, we didn't.
So we need a motion before we discuss.
Okay, we need a second on Ms. Mercer's motion.
Second?
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Mercer, a second by Ms. Powell.
Academic uses, I think I said.
Excuse me, what'd you say, Ms. Mercer?
I was just clarifying what-
Okay.
Counselor.
And the substitute motion was to, uh, accept the policy except for a change in 5.2? And, um, all you did was add the word academic?
I, it's removed school hour, I, I think it removed school hours and then, or for use of electronic devices for academic reason, for academic, it's prior to during school hours, but I don't know if it makes-
Okay.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. Um, so all who approve of the way it's written up here, you know, with the, uh, policy as written except for the change in 5.2, say aye.
Or can we have a discussion first?
Um, yeah, that's right. More discussion. We've had a lot, but any more, yes.
I just, I just want to know, is that going to allow for the homework submission? That's all.
It sounds like it does.
It's academic reasons.
Is that what you intended?
No, but I don't see how to change that in this, I, I think that would have to be under, um, like is there permitted usage?
What do you think, Mr. O'Freo? Would that, would that fall under academic reasons? Yeah. I would say so.
I can't imagine anything more academic.
Yes, than turning in your assignment. So I would say that covers it.
But I think we could put, we could put, um, that under prohibited uses under, um, four point, sorry, 5.1 or 4.1. If, if you did want them to be allowed to use it to submit homework, then you'd put it under 4.1. And if you didn't, then you would put it under 5.1. And maybe what, that would be another motion that could be made that says under 5.1 says, and like under no circumstance should cellphones be required or for use during school or something of that sort. Like required for teachers to complete their assignment. I'm-
That would be another substitute motion. So I, so I think we need to vote on what we have out there right now.
And this is already going back.
Yeah.
And this is just the first reading.
Yes, this is just the first reading. We'll be making a lot of changes and-
President Gerard?
Ms. Hogan?
Vote on this, but then maybe we could just all go down and say how we feel about the turning the assignment in portion, just so that, um, he has that information from the board.
Well, we can say it right now, how you feel about that. So.
President, what I'm trying to avoid is, is having seven board members come to be separate.
Yeah, and word smithing, yeah. So, so let's, let's get a consensus on how you feel about being able to use the phone to turn in board assignments.
Well, once again, I don't think they should be allowed to do that. Um, I feel like we ha- at the junior high level. So I feel like we could maybe have this, but say something about high school level. I, I, I feel like I'm conflicted in this because I think it gives principals more autonomy.
Mm-hmm.
The way it's written without, without it, I mean, we need it so that they do have some autonomy. But I feel like when you're writing a strict plan, you're, you're taking away autonomy, so it doesn't matter.
Yep. Okay, Ms. Powell, I think we know how you feel about it.
Well, just to be totally clear, yeah, I lean towards not, but, but again, I mean, I'm not super, because I see the, if it's just like five minutes at the end of class, maybe it's all right. My, my problem is, kind of like I mentioned, when you normalize it, it does become a problem if,
Yep.
you know, you don't want your child to have a cellphone.
Yep, okay. Um, I, I, I would say no because to say yes is contradictory. And, and we are only talking about, we're talking about junior high and elementary.
Okay, okay, so we're giving our opinion on turning in assignments?
On turning in assignments with the phone.
Um, well, I feel like if we're, if we're limiting cellphone use during class, then I'm, I'm kind of like, I'm a- I feel like we need to be, if we're gonna be eliminating cellphone use during class time, then we need to be strict with that. But I also, I mean, back to the whole original conversation, I still think it's very important to allow autonomy for our principals.
Okay.
So what, or what would you?
I-
On the, the language it?
If we're, if we're not having cellphones in class, then they shouldn't have a cellphone in class.
So you're saying yes?
I'm saying, no, they shouldn't be able to submit.
Turning in their homework.
Okay.
Okay.
If we're not having self, I think we need to stick.
I think he's just wanting to know what this is.
Well, I'm in the policy, so-
You're not talking about just the element of not turning in assignments, you're talking about period. There's no academic purpose then for a cellphone in our schools.
In junior high and elementary. There's no reason a kid should be coming to their parent in junior high saying, "I need a phone for school."
Yep.
Agree, well, I, I, I think generally speaking, uh, like, I'm saying general, I think everyone agrees with that. I, I think as our, as a district policy, we're going to provide a tool that you can.
So I think we need to clarify that in the policy.
But to say you can have a very efficient, elegant tool that you can use if you, if you choose is different than requiring it. Versus, you know, having, you know, calculators or any other tools that we allow students to use that, that just makes their life easier.
Well, in this policy though, I mean, it's, it all has to do with principals. They're the ones that can make that decision. It's not up to the teachers, it's not up to the students, it's just the principal. Correct? I mean, I feel like we're talking about a lot of different things, but the policy is just about what the principal can or cannot do.
Individual principals have the discretion. Okay?
Can I ask a quick question? So are we not just talking about junior high then for this homework turning in stuff?
This does not specify that this is just for junior high. This is for any, anyone. Yeah.
So that's-
Yeah. So, but, but our conversation before, when we were saying it's watering down the policy.
Well, I think we're getting in the minutia of this.
We are, we are.
With, so whether, yeah. I mean, if the policy is, yeah, I don't know that we need to specify that. We, our, our policy states that cellphones can't be used in class. And so if they can't be used in class, then I don't know that we need to have the discussion about whether they can submit an assignment or not.
It's just the exceptions part of the policy. You would say, like you, but you can for sure if there's an emergency.
And that's already, and that's already in there. That's already in there.
But this is in there as well?
But section 5.2 allows the principal at the school level to make exceptions to the policy that we put up. If you don't want that, I can cut all 5.2 and then there are no exceptions outside of the ones that are required by law.
And I think, I think that's where it's getting, like, we're saying that we want principals to have autonomy, but then we're still trying to get really specific here. So it's like we're, we're like contradicting ourselves. So if we're talking about the secondary motion that's at hand that we're waiting to vote on.
Substitute.
The substit- substitute, sorry, not saying it, substitute motion. And we're making comments just about that. I was, I feel like we're getting more specific than just leaving it. And I personally would just leave it as it is right now and give principals that autonomy. So.
I just wanted that, the reason we added that was with the idea that, that digital literacy class, they might need to have a phone with them in that case. Um, but I know that when my children took digital literacy in eighth grade, none of them had social media and it was disgusting social media. They're like, there's lots of things that aren't applicable. So, and, and I think that's, that course is something we really need to work on. And hopefully, as a district, we take leadership on that. And I, I think our superintendent is, is, is taking us in that direction. So I appreciate that.
But, but I also think it's very good you're having the discussion now because there's way more pressure in the mind. way more pressure in the month where you have to get it done.
'Cause we'll have to get it done. But we're, we're gonna be seeing a lot of changes.
For 5.2 as currently indicated.
And the substitute motion.
I think we just vote, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, we have a substitute motion on the floor to pass this policy on first reading with the change in 5.2 of- For, back the other way, for academic-
Academic reasons.
Reasons.
The exceptions are allowed for academic reasons.
Yes, for academic reasons. Okay, should we vote? All in favor of this, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so how many, how many noes? One, two, okay. Okay, the motion passes.
I know, that's funny.
Whew.
And that's also, just for clarity, treating junior high lunch the same as elementary. No phones allowed at junior high lunch. Okay, I can make that change, too.
Okay, okay. Okay, um, board, thank you. It's been a really fun discussion and, uh, thank you, Mr. Nofrio. And I guarantee that we will see some more changes, uh, especially in light of getting input from our administrators, so.
Just a quick point on that. My team will work on this tomorrow. We will get, we will try to get out ahead with some data for you. And then to the board, I will send you individually the data that we collect. There won't be board discussion about that data until you're back together again.
Okay.
But we'll try to at least be as clear and we'll try to keep it very simple to Ms. Stevens' point, that we'll just try, if that's okay, we'll just ask parents that question.
Okay.
And let, I think about that, we'll, we'll put it together tomorrow morning. I think the best way to do this, and I appreciate Mr. Singleton pointing this out, that we could use MyDSD and parents at least get the notification on, on their phone. So, um, we get, we get a little better, uh, response when it does that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you so much, Superintendent. Uh, we've reached the end of our agenda, but we have, uh, a need to go into closed meeting for the purposes of personnel and property. So, um, I need a motion to go into closed meeting and then we'll take a vote.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Barber. Um, do we have a second for that?